Commissioner Hudes.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Birch.
Here.
Vice Chair Kane.
Here.
Chair O'Donnell.
Here.
So, join me, Commissioner Badami is going to lead us to the place. I shall pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the good and evil of this circumstance, the foundation of our God, the people of this world, with everything that is strong. This is my first meeting as chair in many years, so you'll have to bear with me as I keep reading what I'm supposed to be doing. So, the next thing we do, like we elected our board, is some committee reports. I know for a fact I participated, Commissioner Hudes, Commissioner, if there's been one meeting today, and anyone else participate? Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Birch, Commissioner Janoff, and I participated in the start of a general plan committee. We were unable to conduct our full amount of business on the agenda because we did not have a quorum, so it's been continued to February 8th. But we did elect a new chair and vice chair. It's myself and Commissioner Birch.
Thank you. Anyone else before we get to historic preservation? Commissioner Hudes, do you want to give that, or should I?
Sure, although I may need help with one item. So, I think there were three items that we covered tonight. The first one was the decision to de-list, let's see, Shady Lane, property on Shady Lane, I'm looking for the address, 15820 Shady Lane, and the decision was to remove it from the historic resources inventory. And there were a number of reasons for that, that we were able to make those findings. Secondly, we reviewed a number of reports for the last three years on activities of the Historic Preservation Committee. And then we elected a chair, Len Pacheco, and vice chair, and that's where I need your help, because I don't remember her name. This is my first time in the...
Yes, it's a brand-new commissioner, Nancy Duran.
Durham.
Durham. Yeah, like Africa, Durham. Okay.
I'll remember that next time.
All right. I just remember that old song about Durham. Nobody else does, that's okay.
Is that Milton Keynes?
No, that's Whittaker, actually. Okay, so now we have the verbal communications, and I should say this, we have two kinds of verbal communication at these meetings. One is if someone wants to speak on a matter which is not on the agenda, they just have something they want to talk about, you can have up to three minutes to talk about that. And two, if on the other hand you want to talk about something that is on the agenda, then one, you wait till the agenda item is called, and two, the public has asked for their input, and that's when you would speak. But perhaps as importantly, it's very helpful to us, if you would take the forms, which are in the back of the chairs here, the seats, fill it out, and then bring it up here, so we'll know, one, who you are, and two, which item on the agenda you want to talk about. So, any of you that want to talk, please do that to facilitate us. Thank you. Now, the next item would be consent items, and that would include the approval of... Oh, I am advised that Angela Dorner does have something that is not on the agenda that she wants to speak about. Please, I'm sorry I missed you. Come up.
Over the last couple of years, I've discussed traffic issues affecting not only the Almond Grove, but the thousands of residents west of downtown. Tonight, this also includes all the residents who ever use Highway 9 for any reason. One of the most troubling areas is ingress and egress at Highway 9 in Massaul and at Tate, because of so many competing motions in there with constant inflow from Massaul. Over the years, I have requested a traffic signal at Massaul, which would stop the barrage of inflow of eastbound Highway 9 traffic during peak times, letting the intersections of Santa Cruz, University, and the on-ramps to 17 sort of clear out. It would also allow for safe ingress and egress from both Massaul and Tate, and it would provide safer pedestrian crossing. This area is going to be impacted more significantly with the McCarthy Project, which will have ingress and egress only at the point where the driveway for the liquor store currently is. It's between Tate and Santa Cruz, very close to Santa Cruz, about where the driveway is for the liquor store. The McCarthy Project, its TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, studied the intersections on Highway 9 at Massaul, Santa Cruz, and University. If you add in Alberto Way, that TIA studied intersections on Highway 9 at both Santa Cruz, University, and Alberto. Two of the intersections in tonight's projects, TIA, are also on Highway 9 at Santa Cruz and University. In all three of these projects, I didn't see any consideration or adjustment of current traffic volumes for the rebuilding of double Ds, which obviously, unfortunately, has not had any traffic for over a year. In both the McCarthy and the Alberto Way projects, there are illustrations showing significant street modifications along Highway 9. Sometime I'd like for one of you to know how you do or do not rely on these plans in your decision process. My jaw dropped when I looked at the plans for the intersection at Santa Cruz. They're planning to extend the square off three corners, add two new lanes eastbound on Highway 9, second left-hand turn and a right-hand turn, west median to be narrowed. Are we going to lose all of our trees? And the east median will need to be modified to align to the new lanes. The project driveway is close to the intersection of the liquor store, and there was strong consideration for a U-turn at Massaul, yet still no signal. My question, I did a verbal on this at the last council meeting, and I'm hopeful someone from the council will get involved directly with Caltrans, because I've got questions. Does the approval of the project give implicit approval of the town plans for the illustrated street changes? And how does that get handled with Caltrans when things with them last two to three years?
Thank you very much, and as you know, all three of those projects, one of them is coming before us tonight, but the other two really haven't. And the McCarthy Project will be coming before us shortly, and your comments are very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I was just getting to the consent items, as I recall, and we have the approval of the minutes, but we also have a request for a continuance of item number two, and I will consider that as a consent item, and therefore, one and two could be considered together unless somebody wants to pull either. And since I see no one wanting to pull it, I would entertain a motion to approve both matters. Ms. Badami?
I move to approve both matters.
Second?
A second.
All right, thank you. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The matter is unanimous. Now, we can move to public hearings, and I would just say this, there's only one public hearing on this evening. The applicant gets, remind me, 10 minutes? 10 minutes to start with. Other speakers get up to three minutes. Everybody's up to, so when I say 10, it's not required that somebody speak for 10, but they can. And when I say three, you can speak up to three. So, the applicant will start with 10. Others can speak, whoever wishes to speak, and hopefully submits a card. There, I've got some cards here now. They'll each have up to three, and then the applicant will have five minutes to sum up and to conclude. We will then close the public input and discussion among ourselves, and may make a motion, whether that motion is to approve, not approve, or to continue. So, just to identify the matter perhaps more clearly, this is two matters in what we're being asked to do. One is architectural and site application, so we're being asked to approve the design. And two, subdivision application, because presently, there are four lots, and the idea is to combine them into one lot. And then, third, California Environmental Quality Act requires that we give consideration to any environmental impacts. We have before us a mitigated negative declaration, so that would be different than an environmental impact report, and different than simply a negative declaration. So, those are the things that we will be considering this evening. So, with that being said, I will ask the applicant, oh, first I'll ask for the staff report, Ms. Puga.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The project site is located on the northwest corner of Winchester Boulevard and Shelburne Way. The 1.3 acre site currently contains three single-family homes and a second unit. The applicant is proposing to merge four lots into one lot for the purposes of constructing a 30,070 square foot, two-story office building with below-grade and at-grade parking. The applicant is proposing an office building which is consistent with the property zoning of office and general plan land use designation of office professional. The applicant has proposed a two-story building with a maximum height of 35 feet and a lot coverage of 26.5%, both of which are consistent with the property zoning designation. 22 protected trees are proposed to be removed in order to accommodate the building and propose site improvements, while 12 trees are proposed to remain. The town's consulting architect reviewed the project and had no recommendations for changes, noting that the project is well-designed with an elevation along Winchester Boulevard that has varied heights and facade treatments to break the building into visually smaller elements. A transportation impact analysis was prepared to identify any potential traffic impacts from the proposed office use. The report found that the proposed project's impact from traffic generation would be less than significant in accordance with CEQA and the town's traffic impact policy. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared for the project. All potential impacts were reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the findings in Attachment 3, and recommend approval of the project, with proposed conditions of approval included as Attachment 4. There is an addendum and desk item before you this evening, which contain correspondence from the applicant, a project information sheet that was created by the Parks and Public Works Department, and additional public comments that were received after the distribution of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we, along with Parks and Public Works staff and the town's environmental consultant, are happy to assist the commission with any questions.
Okay, so the two matters, one, you have these desk items, and so I'm asking you now whether you've had time to review them, or whether one or more of you wants some more time. So, no one's asking for more time, so I'll assume you've quickly read these, because they came in rather late. The second thing, of course, is do you have questions of staff? Commissioner Badami?
We're probably going to have a lot of traffic questions tonight, so that I can get geared up for that. With a 30,070 square foot building, what is the maximum fire code occupancy, so I can get a realistic picture of the potential commuters that might be making trips there?
We don't have that data before us. We would have to talk to the building official. We use the Institute of Traffic Engineers Manual, is the document that we use to represent traffic generation, and as Ms. Puga said before, Parks and Public Works staff is available to answer questions relating to traffic, but we do not have the building code occupancy for office in front of us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hansen?
I had a general question. We got a lot of comments from the public about the traffic flow, and I understand that the traffic analysis said that it was less than significant, but if I read the packet correctly, there's no proposed modifications, say, a traffic light, or sidebar, you know, crosswalks, or any of that stuff, or modifications to the traffic flow that are proposed, other than that, you know, there's going to be a payment of the traffic impact fee, which goes into a general fund, is what I understand.
So, the project improvements include a sidewalk, detached sidewalk along Winchester Boulevard and Shelburne Way, but it doesn't require the installation of streetlights, additional streetlights? Where...
And then, there is no, there's no modifications to the traffic flow? You know, for instance, some of the, some of the public that spoke talked about the possibility of not making a left turn, for example. None of that is proposed at this time. Is that correct?
We'll defer to Parks and Public Works staff. There are no further modifications.
When you speak, and so the public will know, would you identify yourself, please?
Sorry about that. Mike Weiss, Associate Civil Engineer.
And I would just add that when the TIA is done, if there is an impact that triggers improvement requirements based on the town's traffic impact policy, then those would be required. So, in this case, they are not required.
Yes, Commissioner? Hudes?
As a follow-up to the question about traffic, there have been some suggestions about changes that might be made to access from Winchester, and I was wondering if staff had the opportunity to evaluate those suggestions, right-in, right-out only, from Winchester and Shelburne, to become right-in, right-out only as well. Did the, did our traffic engineers have a chance to evaluate those suggestions?
So, again, we will defer that to Parks and Public Works staff.
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. So, I would like to direct the commissioners' attention to the Parks and Public Works Engineering Information Sheet that was part of the addendum, and in that, we do discuss the traffic flow that is going in and out of the entry for the project, both on Winchester and Shelburne, and that was analyzed and looked at, what was proposed, and ultimately, was looked at from a standpoint of safety, and it was felt to be safe. It was also felt to be a minimal amount of cars turning left, both in and out of the project, the left turn in, left turn out, is a total of six cars that are doing that. And currently, we've also looked at University Oaks Town Home, and also the Park Hill View Apartments, which, University Oaks Town Homes are directly south of that project, and the Park Hill View Apartments are south of the University Oak, the Oaks Town Homes, and both of those have a similar number of left turn in, left turn out. So, those two projects are actually very similar to what we would be seeing with this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Kane?
So, I read the mitigated negative deck. I read the initial study. I read your project information sheets, and I'm not going to give opinion on traffic now until we've had our hearing, but I have maybe a cynical question. If there's essentially nothing wrong here, why does the applicant have to pay $273,000 as a penalty for the traffic?
The fee that's required to be paid is based on the town's traffic impact policy. Whether or not they have to do mitigation is irrespective of the fee that they have to pay. So, in this case, the traffic that will be generated by the project did not raise to a level where it degraded the level of service at any of the signalized intersections more than one grade below, so no improvements were required. However, even though improvements aren't required, they're still required pursuant to our policy to pay traffic impact mitigation fees, and so that is the fee for that. It's not a penalty, and it's not a, it's not intended to be an indicator of, the more you pay, it's, the worse the project is. It is just a function of how many trips, and you pay a certain fee, which I believe is $879 a trip, and so that is what that fee is based on.
So, it doesn't help us with the trips? And as was mentioned earlier, it goes to a general fund?
It goes to a general traffic improvement fund, which is used to do traffic improvements throughout town.
If I may, I have another question. So, I also read extensive reports by the town arborist, we have three of them, and came back to a basic, fundamental question. When is a tree untouchable? I mean, you've got a tree, you've got a protected tree, you've got a historical grand tree, but they all seem to get cut anyway. At what point do we say, "Woodsman, spare that tree"?
Well, that's a decision ultimately for you to make, based on the requirements of the town code. I would say that I couldn't tell you that there is any tree that is untouchable.
So, what does protected mean in that, in that context?
The context is that we have certain findings and considerations that are to be made for the removal, and those findings and considerations are different if you have a project before any of the deciding bodies, or whether it's just a standing tree removal permit alone, because there's different requirements and different standards that have to be met.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Hansen?
I had a little bit of a question on size and comparison to neighborhood. So, my understanding, and this is a general plan designation of office as well as the zoning, and that entitles them to build up to a maximum of 35 feet?
Correct.
Correct.
With the setbacks that were defined in the, in the packet. What I wasn't sure of is the height of the Palo Alto Medical Office, and any other commercial, there's a couple of other commercial buildings, I think they're shorter, and they're much older, but if you could, if you knew the height of the Palo Alto, I would like to know that.
So, the Palo Alto Medical Building, it's 30 feet along Winchester Boulevard, and along the sides and the rear, it's 35 feet.
Okay, and it does, it looked like it sloped back a little bit.
It does slope back into the rear, if you're looking at the rear elevation, it appears as a three-story building with an underground garage.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, then I would request the applicant to come forward, identify yourself, and describe your project.
Ms. Puga, there's a, there you go.
Yeah, trying to make sure everything works here. Okay, I think we're ready to go. Thank you. My name is Doug Rich. I am the project applicant with Valley Oak Partners. Lots to get to in a short period of time, so I'm going to jump right into it. As mentioned, this is a 1.3 acre parcel at the corner of Winchester Boulevard and Shelburne Way. It is zoned office, and as such, with the town code, the setbacks, as required, are laid out here, 10 feet along the south, 25 feet along Winchester, 15, and 20. Now, when we approached the site, we recognized that really, good design and understanding adjacencies are the keys, and so as we looked at this site, we knew that we had, oops, sorry, wrong button. We knew that we had residential here, and properties adjacent here. We had the benefit of some public right-of-way here on Winchester and Shelburne Way, but we definitely wanted to be sensitive to these uses here. The other interesting thing is, obviously, that this is a fully-developed site, that unfortunately, has had some years of neglect and maintenance, and so it is somewhat blighted, and we knew that we could do something here. So, as we approached the site, the first thing to us that was important was the building size and scale, because if you create a massive building, it's hard to have sensitivities to things. And so, the first thing we did was look at that size, and as mentioned, the office zoning allows for 40% coverage, but we knew we wanted to shrink that back, so that we could properly place the building on the site. And so, that was brought back to 26% coverage, a pretty significant reduction over what it could be, because if we made it too big, then obviously, the whole building then starts to encompass the site, and undoes the design features that we did. So, that was the first thing we did, was look at the scale. The second thing was, obviously, setbacks. We wanted to create an oversized setback here, along the south, and along the east. We did that by pushing the building a little bit towards Winchester and Shelburne, but as you can see, we still wanted to create oversized setbacks versus what were required along these, because of sensitivities to pedestrians, cars, bicyclists, et cetera, on there. We had one area that is the closest to our setback line here, and that was because this is a really important visual architectural corner here, as you come along, and we'll talk about what we did here on that. Obviously, heights, along with setbacks, really creates your massing and your scale. This was an exhibit that we added to the addendum. It kind of combined all the information into one exhibit. You can see the setback lines here, and... You can see the setback lines here, and I want to talk about the height. Now, this height is measured, height is measured from two different points. In this particular instance, this height is measured from the sidewalk grade. Understand, this isn't how height is measured per code, and we comply per code, but wanted to give one perspective because of the comments that came, relative to pedestrians, bikes, and cars traveling along Winchester. And with that, then, you can see that we significantly pulled down the heights. I think you heard, for instance, the heights of Palo Alto was 30 feet along Winchester. We've pulled those heights down to 21 feet here, 26 feet here, and 25 foot here, with only two brief architectural elements that pop up to a height, as you can see here. Then I wanted to also add the horizontal dimensions here, because you can see how much the building actually continues to get pulled back until you reach that max height, almost 60 feet from the closest point that someone would be walking down the street. In addition, I think this slide does a good job of showing, as mentioned by the peer review and the architect, the different articulation and modulation of each of these pods, really breaking up the plane of this building through here. Mentioned trees. Trees are a critical part of the site. We were able to work with the Town Arborist to save these trees here, not only by saving these key trees, but also, I think importantly, it adds to the aesthetic and maintains the visual integrity of the site, because the trees here are located all along the edges, where people, obviously, as they travel through, will be able to see. In addition, we added a significant amount of additional landscaping, 49 additional trees, 19 along this side, 12 along the front, and 18 along the back, to create that really rich landscape appeal on the project. Mentioned landscaping, this is obviously in your, your packet, but I think this, just wanted to emphasize the types of materials, the high-quality materials that are being used, and the natural earthen materials, both for sustainability purposes and integrating within the neighborhood. There's been mention of headlights and cars. We knew, as I mentioned in the front, we wanted to be sensitive to the adjacent neighbors, and so I felt like this was something that had a, a great mitigation and aesthetic appeal to do. So we're placing this metal screen panel along the perimeter edge of the at-grade parking, creates this nicely said aesthetic, but also, as you can see, will block headlamps, to be sensitive of any light pollution going to the adjacent neighbors. The other thing that we've learned is, if you can diffuse traffic and disperse it, it helps tremendously. And so we did that by creating two separate entrances to the property, one here along Winchester, and a second one here along Shelburne. This one through here, with 41 at-grade, great benefit, because now you're talking about, it was mentioned in the packet from Public Works, now you're talking about only 10 trips through here in the AM peak hour, and 14 in the PM. So really limited the amount of traffic that would be coming in and out. From here, I'd like to turn the time over to the project architect to talk about the design guidelines, and how we utilize those, and are compliant with those.
Good evening, Check Tank, Studio T-Square, Principal of Studio T-Square. I just want to highlight a couple, a couple of the major design elements. As Doug has mentioned, the siting of the project is extremely important, and I think what we've done is not only understand the intent of the town code, but also really kind of guide, using the guidance of the Commercial Design Guideline as also a way of kind of elaborate on the design. So siting, obviously, is a very important item, as Doug has mentioned. The preservation of the existing trees are very significant, existing trees, not only on Winchester, but also around the site. It was really important to preserve kind of the integrity of the, of the visual of the site. The other thing, the additional setback, I think is really important to also be responsive to the, to the neighborhood. And mind you, the, by the way, our neighborhood is actually not necessarily just residential, there's actually service, commercial behind us, it's a fairly industrial kind of dock and cat hospital, and further down the road is actually a Quonset hut, further down, you know, down Shelburne. So we're reacting to all these different conditions, and I think our project has tried to do that. The other thing that I think on an architectural side, one of the things interesting, you see some images of projects close by, obviously, the Palo Alto Health Center, as well as there's a couple of single-family homes actually further down the street that has some of the, you know, similar kind of architectural treatment that we're, we're showing here. One, one thing that you will see, the office building is being, has been done in town, generally has a very even roof line, even the Palo Alto Medical Center, or the, the buildings over by College, University Avenue, they're very consistent. We actually took in a very different approach to this project, in really kind of looking at the facade, especially on Winchester being much more of a residential articulation. That's why you see the varying roof line, that's very undulating, and there's different accents at different points of the building. The other thing is really important, on commercial office building, we generally have mechanical system sitting on the roof. And the worst thing to do is to treat this as, like, mechanical screens, right, to kind of cause out the commercial nature of the building. We actually use the, the really nice, beautiful kind of metal roof structure to conceal those medical, those mechanical areas as well. So that also helps us to make this project a lot more residential in scale. The landscape is a really big feature of this project. In addition to preservation of the trees, there's a significant amount of screening trees as long, especially along the residential uses to the south, and also to the, to the east. But the, the one on the east is a little bit more sparse, just because of the view potential from, from the, from the east. So the landscape is a really nice feature, and then also, I think one of the things that we have tried to do is, with this four parcel, it's kind of dilapidated with the public realm. So what this project has done is essentially tying these four lots together, and make it a much more cohesive neighborhood. And lastly, I would just end with, we have actually a lot of sustainable feature in the building with solar panel roof, as well as EV charging station in the garage, and most of all, is also operable windows in office buildings, so that it could be much less energy, much more energy-conscious. Thank you, and...
All right, we'll have a few questions, I'm sure. I'll start with Commissioner Badami.
There's a lot of community concern with blocking of the hillsides, and we really treasure our hillsides. So when I look at your plans, and I'm looking at Sheet A2.0.
Okay.
I'm looking at, obviously, the height of the building is maxed out at the 35 feet.
Mm-hmm.
But that ground-level office, level being 13 feet, is there any way you can reduce a couple feet off the ground-level office and the upper-level office, in hopes of bringing down the height to preserve the views of the hillsides, which would go a long ways towards satisfying the neighbors?
Sure. Yeah, so it's kind of a balance of needs. Most office building actually is about 15-foot floor-to-floor. So we actually, you know, I think is a balance, we wanted these offices to be successful, right, for the kind of tenants that would go in there. So 13 feet is actually quite, kind of a slender, you know, profile already. And if you notice on the section, we actually have lowered the, kind of the eve height, in order to accomplish what you're saying, but allowing the volume inside the space to kind of create that higher ceiling. So we, we've tried to do that. The other thing is, I think is also being conscious of not pushing the building too far down, because part of the design guidelines for these buildings along Winchester to address the street. So the only way that we can really do that is really just sinking the building down further, which is not really viable, so...
One, one more question, if I may? So back to the, the tenants that might be occupying the building, and they have a certain desire, apparently, to have higher ceilings. Do you have a proposed tenant in mind? Is it, is it built for a single tenant? Are you hoping to have individual offices? What's your goal?
Ideally, it would be a single tenant. The building has been designed for that professional tenant that we used in the traffic study. Open, exposed floor plates, and the roof tresses, although things are really attracted to that type of tenant, and I think that's the one we're targeting, and would be perfect fit for the site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
On building heights, I'm trying to understand the building height. I'm looking at A2.0, and I'm seeing a building height of 32 foot 2 inch from the front grade, the Winchester grade. And I'm, but I'm seeing a height of 38 inch to, 38 foot 2 inches at the rear of the existing grade. Is that correct?
On A2.0?
Yes. It says existing grade is 376, and then the height would be 32, 2 from 382, so if you take 376...
Right.
That'd be another 6 feet. So the height of the building would be 38 inch, 38 feet 2 inches, is that correct?
I think, Joel, do you want to talk about how height is measured?
So height's measured in a plane. So you see the 35-foot height plane that they have labeled on Section A, which follows the existing grade. You see that notation?
Right.
So we don't measure worst-case scenario from high to low, which is a component of, maybe you're thinking of the hillside guidelines, where we have two measurements. We have the height at any one plane, and then we have the maximum height to low. I think, to your point, yes, if you measured it from back there, you probably do get to the number you're looking at, but that's not how the town code measures height.
Okay, so it, it depends on the pitch of the roof, then?
It depends on the plane of the existing grade. And so that existing grade, if you'll notice, that, that plane follows the 35-foot above grade plane that is at the top of that Section A demarcation.
Okay, and, but what I'm saying is that if the pitch of the roof were different, then that measurement would be different.
That's true, but we wouldn't be measuring from the back portion of the building to the front portion, where you're getting to the 32.2.
Just as an example, if there were a higher pitch, and more of a peaked roof on this building, and so maybe the height of the building might be, instead of 32 feet, it might be 40 feet. It would still be compliant, because we're measuring it off of the pitch of the roof? Is that correct?
It's dependent on where that pitch goes. If you want to have a he, steeper pitch, then you would have to lower the floor plates, the in-between floor heights that Ms. Badami was, Commissioner Badami was speaking about earlier, because you can't, it's kind of like a pendulum. They're at the maximum 35-foot height limit for most of that rear portion of the roof. When you get towards the Winchester side, there is some room in between the 35-foot height limit and the actual proposed roof.
I wonder maybe if we could put this A2.0 up, and... And if we focus on the top diagram, toward the left, it says existing grade 376. Is that, and that's...
At that point, it is 376. If you go farther up that line, you'll see it says 379, then goes up to 382.
382, right.
And if you go the other way, it goes down to 372 and a half, down to 371.
Right, but the, the rear of the building is 376, is that correct?
There, the, there's an arrow of the 376 that is not pointing to the rear of the building.
Ah, okay.
It's pointing up there underneath the, in between the A and the D of grade.
Okay, I'm missing the arrowhead there. So at the rear of the building...
It's, it looks like it's approximately 375.
Okay, so that would be even more, that would put the height of the building at 39 feet 2 inches?
If we measured it the way you're looking at it, that's correct. However, that's not how we measure the height.
Okay, so could you, could you show me how we're getting 35 feet?
Ms. Puga, if you can just maybe show him the 35-foot height limit line?
So we're taking it from the grade here...
Take the mic.
We're taking it from the grade here, which is 375, to the highest roof point, which is right here. So this point to this point is 35 feet, and that's how town code requires that we measure for height.
So why is that the highest roof point? Isn't the highest roof point toward the middle of the building?
It's the highest roof point at that plane.
At that plane, okay. Okay. So, but I, okay, I understand how you're measuring it. Thank you.
All right, I think there were some other questions. Yes, ask Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question about sustainability. The CDAC talked about, you should consider lead certification, and since you've already gone down the path with the solar and the bike lockers and so on and so forth, why not go for at least the minimum lead certification?
Yeah, so we're proposing what I guess would call lead equivalent, et cetera. It's everything except going through the certification process. And the whole purpose for that is that the cost of the certification is quite expensive, and it's fixed. It doesn't scale with the size of your building. So certainly for larger buildings, it makes all the sense in the world, because when you look at it and spread it over a cost per square foot of the building, it's not much. When you get down to this size, at 30,000 square feet, it starts to be very expensive on a cost per square foot. And so we look at it and say, wow, we can deliver all, you know, the purpose of this is to make sure that the environment benefits, and we can do all those benefits, but the cost becomes prohibitive on a building this size.
I, I can understand. I, I have a related question to that, if you don't mind. The VTA looked at this a couple of times, and you've implemented a number of their recommendations in your plans, but not all. And they talked about transportation demand management-type program, and, and I wondered, have you considered any of their other recommendations, like, you know, like encouraging your tenant to have, you know, that, you know, showing them the things that they could do to, to reduce the number of cars, you know, with passes or something like that? I mean, I realize they're going to be your tenant, and you can't make them do that, but, you know, have you considered about how to encourage some of that, so we can reduce some of the traffic?
Yeah, we're actually going to do that. So we're actually going to be implementing the TDM measures, and I think we've got a good selection that kind of hits all the different avenues. So that would be subsidies for transit tickets, so that kind of handles the public transportation side. We've got preferential parking for ride-sharing, so that handles those people that want to do that. And then we've gone with the extra bike lockers and bike racks, plus showers, to hit the cycling side. So we're absolutely going to be implementing those things.
Okay, so you are considering all of the things that they suggest, or most of them? Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Kane?
So I had some questions, but you've, you've captured my attention with this other discussion. What is the approximate cost of a lead certification? Silver, not gold, the B, the Plan B?
Yeah, so the certification side, you can go through the different levels, platinum. It's about the same cost for that, so that doesn't really vary, but it's over six figures.
600?
No, over 100,000.
Somewhere above 100,000 to get a leads cert, and that's what all these other companies have done, when they get a lead certified. They pay that much money?
Yeah, and, because there's, there's a lot. I mean, there's the process there, you've got to get consultants that go through, and usually there's multiple layers to check the box and submit the forms and all this kind of stuff, so it's quite elaborate.
So I like your phrase, leads, leads equivalent. Might save a lot of people a lot of money if you could provide that document, and at the top it can say, "Leads equivalent," and we can hang it somewhere.
Sounds like there needs to be a competing program, you're right.
No, I'm serious. If you are doing all the things that, that the lead certification requires, I think that should be memorialized. You should have a document that says it, and that would have some meaning.
Absolutely, we definitely would market all the things, right, because we're doing solar, we're doing all these great programs, we're absolutely going to market those, because they're important to tenants, they're important to us.
So does that mean, yes, you can provide?
Yes.
Thank you. We have some passionate and articulate letters from, from the community, your neighbors, and a couple of them talk about the way the Palo Alto Medical Building has configured its parking, such that the cars are not going to travel out into space, and the headlights are not going to be bothering anybody. Did you look at their configuration? Or, when you mentioned the additional landscaping, do you think that will totally cure the headlight problem?
Oh, I lost it. Sorry. Where did we go here?
That one.
I thought, oh, I guess I don't have it.
It was the one, you went by it.
Yeah, so we looked at those items, and I'm going to, probably should take this, right? I'm going to... Over there. As far as both safety and light, as I mentioned, along the perimeter of this, we felt like that metal panel was kind of a creative way to deal with the headlight while still providing a great visual appeal, aesthetic side of it. And then as far as the safety goes, along here, there will be a two-foot continuous curb wheel stop, right, that stops that. Then you would have the metal panel. And as I mentioned here, we're planting nineteen trees along there. Trees become one of the best, they don't move, one of the best safety barriers there is. And then there's an existing block wall there. So we felt like the combination of all those items dealt with both headlight and light pollution as well as safety.
All right. Thank you. Did you communicate that to the concerned parties, and did they find it acceptable?
I did communicate it. It was not acceptable.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Badami.
So we have a letter from Shauna and Bob Garzey, and it's relating to the exterior exit stairway on the south side of the property. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the advisory comments on the conditions of approval, and it would be item number forty. And it talks about the exterior exit stairway from the parking garage is less than ten feet from the property line, and there's certain building codes that you need to comply with a fire separation distance of ten feet from the adjacent property lines. And so there's two alternatives there. One solution would be to enclose the stairway in a one-hour rated enclosure, and the other option would be to move the stairway into the large fan room area. And I'm concerned about crime, just as they are. It's kind of my passion. So do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah. I, as long as the rating of the garage enclosure is within that, you know, the type-one garage structure, what we can do is also have a rated door at the bottom of the stair to kind of create a separation, so that you don't necessarily, that one great stair could actually be, you know, outside of ten feet. Our stair is actually not inside a ten-foot separation at this point. It's actually, our minimums are at ten feet, so we have to be outside of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you. With regard to the architectural style, how would you, what would you describe the architectural style?
Well, I, we took a lot of cues from different buildings around, and one of them is actually a, just maybe two blocks down the road, there's a house there that we showed on an image. It's actually, I call it a more modern interpretation of the single-family home, but has a, it's actually on, there you go. It's actually, the one is a little dark, but the one top, the two images is a little dark on the screen, but has a standing seam metal roof, really clean plaster kind of a condition. But in our case, we actually augment that with a very nice, what we call the kind of wood-like rain screen material. It's very high-quality, very textural and very kind of woodsy-looking, so to give it some warmth. So I, the way we look at it is, this is kind of the anti-commercial feel, where we have a lot of breakup in terms of the architecture that's more relative to the scale of the residential. So I would call it a more updated, kind of a, you know, kind of residential scale commercial building.
Okay. And just to follow up, I think you mentioned in your earlier remarks that you felt that the architectural style was compatible with several residences in the area. Is it just that one? And are you referring to the mid-century modern that are across the street on Winchester? Are you referring to the bungalow that's across the street, or the Spanish Mission-style homes? Which residences do you feel that this is compatible with?
Sure. I think, you know, we took, in terms of the overall massing, so I, you know, we tend to not try to look at architecture as like thirty-one flavor, you know, what flavor you put here. But really looking at, I think actually the design guideline asks for it too, is how do you kind of break up the massing of the building? So we didn't say, you know, this should be Victorian, or this should be, you know, this or that. We kind of look at the scale of the building. The scale of the building, we kind of literally kind of crafted it so that it merged in with the massing of the building around it. So that's the first thing. It's not just necessarily stylistic. We did take some cues from the library, which is, you know, contemporary, but it's very warm. It still fits in with the overall town quite nicely. But we're also very conscientious, and the library doesn't fit here. But there's element of the library which is contemporary, but still fit in the neighborhood very cleanly, very warm. But one of the things, main thing about these projects, I think is important, especially commercial office building, is the roof, right? Most buildings tends to have a flat roof, a mechanical screen. That's the main element that we thought would really tie into the neighborhood. And, and you can see also, we've crafted the roof very carefully to kind of react to different conditions within the site. So I don't have a kind of stylistic answer, but because I don't think that's appropriate for the neighborhood as well, because I, you know, Victorian hasn't been built around for a while, and there's not necessarily really that immediate context, because we don't want to draw from the medical office building next door either. And I think, but we want to be sensitive to the overall massing and forms.
I think Commissioner Badami was in mid-question at one point. So let's go back to you, then Commissioner Hudes will come back to you, and then we'll come to Commissioner Kane. Oh, if you'll bear with us, he has one.
Of course.
Question.
Are you saying anything bad about our library?
No, I think it's a beautiful building.
But you don't want to say anything bad about our library.
It is a beautiful building.
That's your question.
A beautiful library.
I thought it was a comment, but go ahead.
All right. So Vice Chair Kane earlier had mentioned the headlight issue that concerns the Vessona Oaks townhomes. I would be concerned too if I lived there. Is there any way that you could consider perpendicular parking on that south side?
You mean parallel parking versus...
I'm sorry. Yes, parallel parking.
Yeah. I think it's, for the circulation, it's actually kind of tough, because you need to pull into the space, and you've got to make a U-turn to come back, because on that side is the, you know, parking, you've got to pull in, right? And then so you've got to find a way to come back out. And from our point of view, there's little like full redundancy measure that we're applying here, and actually overapplying on top of the required, you know, the six-foot block wall. And so we thought that would be appropriate. The other thing that I think is really hot, important to point out, and I think is a concern, is a legitimate concern, but if you look at the sections that we provided, it, the areas of the parking is also more in line with the garages that is on the ground floor of those units, so.
And did you work with the neighbors with those nineteen trees that you're going to plant along there to make sure that they would buffer the noise and the headlights?
Yeah. We've heard the comments on the community meeting, and Duck can probably speak to that, but we've actually had quite a bit of discussion on that.
Yeah. So we actually increased the number of trees, and certainly can work with the neighbors on placement of those. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes, you were in mid-question too.
This is actually on a different topic, but I think it was raised earlier. How many employees, customers, clients, people will be on the site?
So the, in terms of the occupancy of the office building, it's about thirty thousand square feet, right? So as the typical occupancy rate is about a hundred square foot per occupant, so it's about three hundred people that works in the building. But in terms of parking, we have one hundred and twenty-eight stalls per code, and so it's two different measurement, right? It's the, so the density of people in the building would be about three hundred if it's fully occupied, so.
Yes. So that's actually, it varies by the use.
Right.
And for the professional use, it's usually a lot less than that.
Okay. Are you contemplating a particular use?
We're contemplating the professional tech, that type of use.
And how many people would that be?
I don't know. I'd have to, it depends on the tenant.
I'm just giving you, the previous answer was giving you basically per building code. So if, for that kind of use, that's maximum, but most likely is not that dense.
Okay. Is there a number we should use for consideration other than three hundred?
Well, the, it depends on the tenant, and I don't have a tenant lined up yet, but I can tell you who we're going through. Some of them like to have five hundred square feet an employee. It just varies.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Kane?
I wanted to make sure about something. We've made references to the letters we've received from the community. In all fairness, you have received copies of all of those letters, and have you had time to review them? They have the same letters I have, yes?
I have the same letters, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
The questions, pardon me, Commissioner Hanson?
Just one last question I had. I was trying to, I, as I was driving down the Winchester in that particular area, one thing that I really noticed, other than the Palo Alto Medical Building, which kind of disappointed me, is that all the commercial buildings were fairly concealed by trees. And, and I know you, you talked about your landscaping plan, so I was trying to come up with a, you know, an after picture when the maturies were mature, that were going to be replaced and everything. Is any one of these renderings, you know, what you would expect the very final, because like that one there exposes quite a bit of the front of the building. So it wasn't, you know, concealing very much. And the other shots that were of the back of the building, maybe it's because you were just trying to show us what it looked like. It didn't look like it was going to be covered by trees, even though I could see that you had that in your plan.
Yeah.
So you see where we're going. I was just trying to see what it was going to look like.
It's, I think you're right. So if, I think you have to look at the number of trees that are planted and where they're planted, and we can certainly bring up the landscape architect to talk about maturity. It's always hard with a rendering, right? Because I actually want to be able to show the building, so we have to pull that back and those things. And you've got trees that are smaller and all that kind of stuff. But certainly the intent, you're right, is to really kind of nest that building in along with those trees.
I don't think so. I'll ask.
So that you basically, you wouldn't be able to see a lot of the facade?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to ask. I just want to ask a couple of things myself. I, when I went out and looked at the property again today, and then I went up the block to look at the Palo Alto Medical Building, and realizing the size of the buildings and the, and the height of the building, I was surprised that the Palo Alto Medical Building looks less imposing than this building. And I asked myself, why? And so I'm just going to bounce this off you, because I could be wrong on both counts. It does look lower to me, even though that's not the number that's correct. And all I could think of was the, the land, the land there is more precipitous, and when you, as you could, it goes down awfully quickly, I guess. Now, you're talking about excavation, and I, you're talking about how many cubic feet you're going to remove.
About seven thousand.
Seven thousand. So I don't know what they did on the Palo Alto Medical Building, nor maybe it just started differently than yours. But it does seem to me that notwithstanding, and I don't criticize what you've done, it sounds like you were very careful about it, but nevertheless, it looks, and I'm looking at the story poles, it looks taller and therefore more imposing than does the Palo Alto Medical Clinic, when in fact you're telling me that in the front is actually, I don't know, a couple of feet taller, I think is what you told me. Am I, is there some reason for that, other than the fact that maybe I'm not viewing it properly?
I don't know, because it's a good question. I haven't really thought about that and compared the two, because when you talk about absolute terms, correct, we've actually pitched the roof down lower. I don't know if it just has to do with actually having the building and having the visual of the facade there and how it slopes up versus a story pole. It's a good question. I haven't really contemplated it.
When I drove into the parking lot of Palo Alto Medical Building, you really go down, and then there's that large outdoor parking area, and then there are two entrances to their semi-underground parking. Is your, is the, does your property fall as rapidly as does the Palo Alto Medical Clinic?
I don't know. I don't know that answer. They could be down quicker than we are. It's, it's a good question. I don't know that answer.
Seven thousand cubic feet is to accommodate the underground parking?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? If not, I will ask, thank you, you'll have a chance to come back when we're through here. I will ask, I've got some cards here, which I'll run through, and I'll call your name, and you can come up and speak for as much as three minutes. And I, one left, I can read properly and two pronounce properly. The first name I have is Chek Tang.
Oh, he, I put his name, he was part of us as well.
Okay. Thank you. I have Brian, is it Care?
Carr.
Carr? Please come forward.
Begin with state of affairs.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And what I have not asked, or have not said, it's very helpful again when you identify yourself, if you can tell, give us your address, that would be helpful too.
Sure. No problem. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing us tonight. My name is Brian Carr. I live at seventeen-five sixty-six San Benito, which is directly across from the proposed building. I think, I'd like to start by saying, the concept of compatibility, I would say, imagine yourself looking at the hillside, imagine yourself living there, owning a house for twelve years with your family, looking at the hillside, and then having that building built in front of you, and then ask yourself, how would you feel? Would that be compatible? I don't, I don't think it's compatible at all. And I don't necessarily think the Palo Alto Medical Building is terribly compatible either, but this takes it even in a, in a direction further from compatibility in the neighborhood. I wrote an objection letter for the commission to review, that basically the height of this building is simply too high, it's too close to Winchester, and it just is not compatible with the neighborhood at all. There is a lot that could be done with this building that would make it compatible, but the developer has no intentions of doing that, because it would simply cut the profit of this project. This project does not benefit the town of Los Gatos. It benefits the developer's financial needs. That's it. We're asking that the building be pushed back ten feet and down ten feet, and I believe some of the responses to that were that that wouldn't be possible and still have the underground parking, but that would be very much possible if this was made into a one-story. And the majority of the buildings in this area are all one-story buildings. They could still have their desirable thirteen-foot, you know, ceilings, you know, to the developers, I would say, you know, having this giant building in our neighborhood isn't desirable at all, and we live there. So, you know, if compatibility was of an interest to these individuals, and certainly to the commission, this could be brought down to a single story. The parking could be easily done under, underneath the property. It's my understanding that the biopond could easily be elongated on the back of the property, which would allow the building to be pushed back. And to your point, Commissioner O'Donnell, the reason that it seems so much higher than it is, is because of the way it's designed, where the front of the lid comes to the highest point of the property. And if that was reduced, or that was turned around, it wouldn't seem so imposing to the street, and that's what we're objecting to as well. So, thank you.
Other question? Yes. Commissioner Hudes?
Yes, if you don't mind. You mentioned that you had requested it be pushed back ten feet and down ten feet. What do you mean down?
So the, just the overall height of the roof be brought down ten feet.
I see. So if it's twenty-three feet now, then you're saying thirteen feet?
Thirty-five by some sort of a confusing measurement. And to your point, I think thirty-eight point something is the actual height that the residents see this building as.
Right. Okay. So you're looking for a height reduction of ten feet.
Of ten feet.
Did you discuss these with the developer?
I have not discussed them with the developer now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Kushner.
My question is somewhat following up with Commissioner Hudes' last question. Were you contacted by the developer for any community meetings?
Absolutely none. The first that our family heard about this was the story poles being put up, which seemed challenging as well as it was, I think, four days before Christmas. I don't remember the exact date. That same day, the story poles went up, we tried to call the building department to find out what was going on, and it was already in winter holiday break. So I think there's definitely a feeling amongst the neighborhood that this is definitely trying to be kind of slid through, under the radar. I have to say that any type of approval to move forward on this now, I couldn't describe it any other way as reckless. I don't think the EIR is accurate. I don't believe the traffic report's accurate. Three hundred people in the building, and then no answer on who's going to move in. It's just, it's not, it's not right for that neighborhood. It just doesn't fit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Kane?
You live on San Benito?
San Benito Way, yes.
San Benito Way?
Yep.
Staff, is that within 300 feet where you send out the notices? Do you know?
I don't have that information in front of me, but it's, I believe the Speaker said it's directly across the street. Obviously, there's a number of properties, and then it gets to San Benito Way back there. I'll see if we have an exhibit that can show that.
You don't recall a notice from the town about the project?
No, no notice whatsoever, and we feel that we're not being given ample time to even prepare a defense on this. And so I've met with building twice to try to talk about other types of options, but have had no contact whatsoever.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, when you sent out the notices, it's been a long time since I've, I used to do those kinds of things, but we used to use a title company to help us find the homes which were within 300 feet. What do you do to ascertain the distances and the homes within the distances?
We have programs through our ARC GIS that determine 300.
It has been a long time for me.
Yeah.
We didn't have programs. But you're satisfied that you noticed everyone within 300 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next card I have is Andrew Spiker. Thank you.
Could we give him a hand? Thank you.
So while that's getting set up, thank you for reading through our extensive comments.
Why don't you wait till we don't stretch your time?
Okay.
Two minutes warning.
So Andrew Spiker, 708 Winchester Boulevard. I'm actually the closest unit in University Oaks and the president of the HOA. I want to talk about what we consider sort of issues with the project. The first is size, that we've talked a lot about Palo Alto, it is actually half the size in terms of parking spaces and building, therefore the size of the building. Many of the other office buildings are set back. This is going to set a precedent for the rest of the land that's directly north of the project, Green Thumb and others, there's a lot of space there to be developed. The other thing, we live at existing grade, we don't live at whatever grade the measurement was done from. This is a, two pictures, before and after. The left, my oldest son's window, the right, my youngest son's window, and I've superimposed the building plan with the story poles, and you can see, we went from looking at trees and skies to about 80% blocked and about 60% blocked for the two windows, and our neighbor, Georgina O'Tock, is about 100% blocked. So from our perspective, this is a massive building. It's three stories high, starting with the parking garage and moving up to the other two stories. Traffic, you guys already talked about quite a bit, that's just a picture of the left turn lane, where you can't see anything all the way to the Blossom Hill intersection, there's just no way you can let left turns come out of this property. From an exhaust and noise perspective, we've been talking to the developer on this, but the current plans still have all of the exhaust of the garage about as close as you can get to my neighbor's front door and our open windows of our property. So noise and exhaust is a serious concern for us. The biggest concern we really have is this metal screen is the only way to deal with what they call at-grade parking. The reality is, by the time it gets down to us, it's actually four foot above our existing grade where we live, and I am concerned about the head-in parking, which we'll cover as well. There are trees, but they're shown at their mature height, what will they really be when they're put in? And my kids play in the driveway that's, you know, pictured down to the right here. You guys looked at this as well, from the Palo Alto, you can see they did perpendicular parking, where it was really close to the building beside it. They have a fence that's very substantial and completely blocks anything cars could throw at you, and this is facing residential, this is, oh, sorry, this is facing commercial, not residential. Do we really want to deal with this, which is what happened when they didn't put in a fence across the street at the ear, nose, and throat, when a car went over into residential with the same sort of drop-off, and they finally had to build a fence to deal with cars dropping off into their property? And there are other places where there are residential to commercial, this is at Panera, and you can see the buffer is quite bigger, much more substantial trees, cinder block wall, none of the issues with headlights and parking from that perspective. Proposal for us is just reduce the size of the building, take the parking to actual grade level, and reconfigure those 13 spaces to not be facing our property.
All right, thank you very much. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Kendra?
I'm just going to ask you the same question I asked before. Were you contacted by the developer for any meetings, and did you attend those?
Yeah, absolutely. So I am the president of the HOA. Not everyone in the HOA got a card about the development, but many of us that are here did. We actually attended a meeting on September 12th with the developer at the Los Gatos Lodge, and we voiced some of these concerns. After that, we had a meeting where we heard about adding more trees as the only mitigation from the head-in parking perspective with the developer in early December. And unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of time to follow up with the developer, because it was after that, and then, as mentioned, right around Christmas, that the story poles went up. And honestly, until the story poles went up, we couldn't really judge the height of the project. It was only once they were up that I was able to kind of superimpose it with my design skills and be able to see what it really was going to look like.
Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So in pertaining to the headlights and the parking situation, when you did meet and you talked, did you discuss your desire that it be more substantial wall or something built there to keep some privacy and that?
Yeah, we did, and what we heard was that with adding more trees and our existing sound wall, which is not really a structural wall, and the parking block that that would, and the screens for the lights, that that would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. Commissioner Janoff?
Thank you. At the September meeting, when you met with the developer, did he have the designs that we're seeing today to show you?
No, in fact, we actually have access to a couple different documents that I still don't see in your planning documents, of the proposed changes with adding the trees, and he actually developed, it was, I think it was this one. I should say, I do believe they listened to us, so I do believe there was communication, I just don't think there was solutions. So we were provided at the December meeting with, after the September meeting, we heard in December that they were ready to talk again, September 9th, so September 9th and then December 9th, or somewhere around there. And we were presented with this, because we were really asking, what was it going to look like from our perspective? If you look through the current plans, you'll notice that everything's chopped off right around where residential starts, and there was really no profile to have an idea what the site was going to look like. This is what we were provided with and informed, that the mitigation was just more trees along that border, as opposed to changing the height of the drop-off or doing something better about the head-in parking.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next card I have is Georgina Van Horn.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you also for focusing for so long on traffic. I am one of the closest with, along with Andrew Spiker, couldn't be any closer to the building, and I've lived in the townhouse for 30 years. Right now, it is very, very precarious, turning right or left out of our driveway. There are kids going to Dave's Avenue, which is around the corner, and also at Fisher Middle School, which is very close, walking and riding their bikes. Very dangerous situation, under the best of circumstances, and not even to mention that it's a 25 mile an hour zone, and most cars go 40 to 50 miles an hour, right there on Winchester. So that's a major, major concern. Another is the size of the building, which you've heard talk about. It does not fit in with that whole area. It will shout out us that have windows upstairs, it'll block, as you saw in the pictures that Mr. Spiker showed, it'll block light, we will be facing a wall, we will have the cars, I feel like practically, on my doorstep. There's another concern with the trees. If you've read the report, most of the trees will be eliminated, and that whole area, that whole boulevard from Lark is all tree-lined, which is one of the main entrances to our town, and so the buildings kind of recede, and they're old, beautiful trees, which are such a treasure in our town. There's an exhaust fan that we've talked about, and I know Doug Rich has worked to change that, but that's part of the underground parking, or needed for the underground parking. It's very close to us, will it spew fumes all day long? Because if it's an exhaust fan, that's what's its purpose, and will there be noise also? So these are my concern, the size of the building, the traffic, the exhaust, just the looks of that whole neighborhood will change drastically. I appreciate the minor concessions that the developer has worked on, I know it's zoned, it's zoned commercial, but I know with your help, we really could make and minimize the impact of that building in our area. So thank you.
Before I check on any questions, I didn't get an address. Can I have your address, please?
I am 706 Winchester Boulevard, and I'm the very first townhouse, as you turn into our driveway here, and Mr. Spiker's is the second one, and we'll be literally right along their driveway and the cars that will be facing us.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Janoff?
Were you notified? And did you meet with the developers?
Yes, yes, same, the same September meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next card I have is, I'm going to, the last name appears to be Frendel, Frendel? But I'm having trouble reading the first name?
Sky.
Sky, oh.
Kyle.
Kyle. Thank you. And your address, please?
17480 Shelburne. I'm the owner and operator of Los Gatos Dog and Cat Hospital, and I have 285 feet of frontage on the east side of the building. We're the longest continuous operating business in Los Gatos, having served the community for 70 years. We moved to this site 28 years ago, and so Commissioner Kane, you asked, when is a tree not a good tree? When it's cost me about $40,000 over the last 28 years for roof damage to two separate buildings from some of the oaks? So I'm somewhat confused by the portrayal of which oaks are being removed and which are not, because I still have one that hangs over about 60% of my clinic, and over the years, I've had to put a new roof on it because of damage from that tree. So with all this, it's still somewhat confusing to me about which trees on our border are being removed. Some of the, seems to give a portrait of these trees being completely inside of the plot, when in fact, there are several of them above my clinic and above the housing at the back south side, or yeah, no, north side of the building as well. So I'm a little bit confused, and I'd like some clarification, because if these are going to remain, you know, for 28 years, I've had these trees being pruned to try and prevent damage, but I've had damage to several buildings, and I'm glad that at least we're going to deal with the water, because for 28 years, we've had to sandbag the back of our entrance to the clinic to prevent flooding coming down the grade.
Okay, are there questions? Yes.
So I heard what you had to say, are you generally in favor of the project, or not? You just wanted to express your concerns about the trees?
Well, I need to know what the liability is for this, because, you know, we've lost, you know, two roofs, and these things are, I know they're heritage trees, but they're dangerous trees, and I don't know what their fate is going to be. It's hard to, it's hard to determine, because on some of these maps, you see a nice little round thing that doesn't seem to suggest that it's outside the canvas or the boundary of the property that's being developed. I'm not against it. I was out of town, out of country during, I was contacted by email regarding that there was going to be a project, but I wasn't in country when the meetings were being held, the initial meetings.
Okay, so, but your main point is you wanted to express your concerns about the trees and the damage that they could cause?
Absolutely. 28 years I've been dealing with them, and I have the entire east side frontage of this development.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
With your concern with the trees, did you have an opportunity to read the Town Arborist Tree Report, which is available online on the town website?
Yes, yes.
And it wasn't clear to you?
They're still falling on my roof.
Okay.
So I mean, I, you know, and they're getting older, and I know that with development, that oak trees suffer when, there's a lot of project going on on that. I'm not, I'm concerned, because I have seen other developments where the trees have died after heavy machinery's in there, and if they're moving the amount of dirt that they're saying, there's going to be a lot of impact on those, and that's, I don't, I didn't see anywhere that was considered in the development of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next card I have, and again, I'll hopefully pronounce this correctly, John You can correct me, thank you.
My father pronounced it Ikinger, my mother Ikinger, so I grew up with a split personality. John Ikinger, 637 San Benito Avenue in Los Gatos. I'm not on San Benito Way, I'm a few blocks away. I do commute every day past this, and I always enjoy coming up Winchester, and when you get just to that intersection, you finally get the view of the mountains again. That view of the mountains is going to be gone with this project. My question is the following. I sat through the North 40 deliberations, was very interested, I got up and I was vocal about them, and part of the North 40 deliberations was that we had this mandate from the state that we had to provide more housing in Los Gatos. Instead, this project is providing more commercial space, it's going to bring 300 people a day with only 120 parking spaces, 300 people a day possibly, into Los Gatos, exasperating the commute project, and adding more people who are going to be looking for housing in this vicinity. Why is this project not being zoned for commercial, residential instead, this property? It's an acre and a half, it should be residential. If we have a state mandate that we have to have more housing, especially more affordable housing in this town, we don't need more office building, we don't need more commercial building. As the other Speaker said, this adds nothing to the town of Los Gatos but more exasperation. It decreases the views, it adds more people coming in, more traffic, doesn't add any, doesn't solve the problem of residential in this town. It's too big, too tall, not appropriate for this town. Thank you.
Are there questions? Yes, Vice Chair Kane?
Just a question of staff, in the report, somewhere I read that previously there was a residential proposal for this property. Is that, is that accurate, and if so, what happened?
That is accurate. The applicant can probably speak further to this. They did have a residential project. Given the concerns in general in town with planned developments, the applicant made a choice to bring forward a project that actually complies with the existing general plan, land use designation, and the existing zoning code.
As the other one did not comply.
Correct, because it would have been residential in a commercial zone.
Thank you.
I think there are no other questions. Thank you very much. The next card I have is Angelia Dorner.
Hello, Angelia Dorner, proud resident of the Almond Grove, and even a proud resident of the town of Los Gatos. I'm really glad that the mention was made about our schools, because no one has talked about the safe routes to school and which ones might be impacted by this. There are a lot, a lot of children that traverse that area, you know, before school and after school. So I'm really glad that that was brought up, and I didn't see it really discussed anywhere in the TIA. Adding just a couple of things to my earlier comments, we have this tonight, Alberta Way was supposed to be heard January 11th, but it's been continued, which will be done pretty soon. As Chair O'Donnell said, the McCarthy thing will be done very soon. The story poles on this came, on double D's, came down very recently. There's a high probability that all of these things will be going on at the same time. Also, a high probability that the VTA routes, 48 and 49, are going to be taken away, they're going to be taken out of service. We must somehow devise a holistic plan for traffic impacts during construction with all the construction traffic and construction workers, as well as ongoing. I request a study session for traffic impact analysis, so that people and residents have a better idea of what is involved with this. Because how you can have what is involved with this. Because how you can have 300 people, 128 parking spaces, but only have 33 cars going in in the AM, I don't get it. I just think it's horrible. Left turns out of there will be very dangerous. I go to Dog and Cat Hospital, and there's always issues with people trying to get in and out of there. Architecturally, I gag when I go by Netflix. I'm just glad that it's so far on the other side of town that I can pretend that it's Campbell. I just, you know, I just, I can't stand this, this glass, glass, glass. I mean, it's so imposing, and they use the library as a precedent, but a library is not an office building, and I'm not saying anything bad about the library, Mr. Kane, please. But anyway, it's there, but there's nothing else in town that compares to it, and I hope there isn't as far as more town closer into town proper. All the glass is imposing. Personally, I think that it seems higher than other buildings because of the glass. It's totally out of place as to size and style. Windows, windows, windows. They can see out to the hillsides, but no one else can see the hillsides that they see now. And that, I think, is just about it. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. I have what I think is the final card, and I'm going to have trouble with the pronunciations. Brian Meckichuk?
Perfect.
Wow.
Hi, Brian Meckichuk. I've got two properties. One is 55 Roberts Road, and the other is 17509 Villa Serena. Couple of points, and I wrote two letters, and I think I explained quite a bit in those letters. I just wanna highlight a couple of points that the applicant raised tonight. One of the things is, they were talking about the size, but I think what they did was they worked out how much parking they could have, and then they worked backwards from that in terms of the square footage. So, they couldn't get any more, the building is as large as it can be for the amount of parking that they have. If you look at the height of the building, they picked the highest point on the property. That's the northwest corner to establish the 35 feet. I, they only provided cross-sections, two cross-sections, one east-west, one north-south. I'm asking for a number of other cross-sections. The setback, they talked about a large setback. Well, the setback is for the trees, so that they could keep those two trees in the front, in the southwest side of the property. If they moved the building further west to the, then those trees would be gone. Regarding the comment on certification, well, you know what? You don't have to pay $100,000 or more to go through and do the checklist and calculate yourself how many lead points you can get and what certification you would get. It's just, as the vice chair said, you know, go through the numbers. I didn't see any solar in the plans, so regarding sustainability, that seems to be an add-on. Maybe I missed it. Regarding the sustainable elements, if you look at their initial application and then the comments that staff made, the only reason why electric cars, et cetera, were included was after the fact because staff asked for that. What I'd like to do is just put up this. So, here you see in the--
Could you use the mic, please?
Oh. I'm sorry. If you look in the top right-hand corner here--
Turn around a timer, I'm about to--
Oh. Then you can see that that's the highest, the highest part, and they carry that same plane all the way south. And the park, the parking lot that they call that grade is actually almost a full story at the back, so.
We have a question for you?
Yeah. I interrupted when you started. I wanted you to take the mic with you, so that the millions at home could hear you, because once you move away from that, you're not being recorded, and we don't have a record. So, I interrupted you. I'd like you to make your last point again, because I didn't get it.
I believe my last point was saying that they're measuring the elevations from this corner. This is the northwest corner, and they only provided one elevation, and that goes along this line here, which is north-south, and they provided an elevation this way that goes east-west.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, sir. I think that's all. Well, I know that's all the cards I have, so if anybody else didn't get a card in, we entertain it now. If not, then I'm going to recall the applicants, and they have five minutes for their final statements.
Okay, Doug Rich again. Thanks. The project was originally submitted as a residential. The application, as mentioned, was pulled because of lack of support. It would require a zoning change. It wasn't compatible with the existing zoning, and then all the impacts that we've talked about in Los Gatos relative to residential were definitely in play with schools and all these things, and so we felt it prudent to move forward with the project as envisioned by the council and the planning commission and what it was designed for. The 300 number, just to clarify, that was a max number based on fire and building code. That's not the intent and the design of the building, and so, sorry, that was something that was misspoken. The design features, we feel like are absolutely compatible, as referenced by the peer review and the town architect, who also went through and said that this is compatible with the project. And then I wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made. The first with Mr. Frandl, we can absolutely work with him on properly trimming the trees through permitting, et cetera, to make sure that they don't impact his roof. Really wanna do that. It was also mentioned relative to the exhaust. We are absolutely and have been working with them to move the exhaust away from the southern side. It's been changed to a vertical element. It's not a fan blowing up through there. It's actually just a louver, it's actually just a vent shaft that would move north-south, and we've moved it away from pointing out towards their property to now 10 feet in and vertical to address that concern. The, as far as the parking goes, I have absolutely met with them. They're right. We've had dialogue back and forth. I'm not trying to be a pain on this. The thought was just as follows, and frankly, we can fix this if you would prefer. The thought was simply, okay, someone's coming down through here, and so, they're not coming down the ramp and accelerating and heading straight over there. You're actually gonna have to be braking in order to make a turn, and typically turns are three miles an hour, especially in a thing. So, the thought was, okay, now you're dealing with someone that's going slow, then you have the wheel stop, then you have the metal panel, then you have the trees, then you have the block wall. Felt that was sufficient, and really liked the aesthetics. If that doesn't work, and the commission believes that we need to do more, I have no problem replacing this metal panel with a block wall-type panel in order to address that. I don't think it's the best thing aesthetically, and like I said, I personally believe that what's there right now would handle cars at that speeds, but if that's prudent, and you feel it, let's do it. My intent is not to fight with that. I think my, my last point, as far as intensity, compatibility, this area along Winchester, which makes sense to me, has been designated by the town as office, and it runs from our property all the way up. Interestingly, the property next to us is also office. This is actually a non-conforming use, interestingly, and this is actually zoned office as well. When we looked at the site, and we said, how do we be sensitive to the size of this thing? We looked at this street, and interestingly, two stories, two stories, two stories, and when you look at the measurement of intensity that the town uses, which is building coverage, 47% coverage, you can tell. Interestingly, they're at 20. We're at 26. We absolutely tried to be sensitive and pull it back. We could've built to 40. We didn't do it. We didn't think that was appropriate. We looked at what was there and felt like this absolutely integrates with the street along there in terms of intensity, intensity. 47, 20, 26. We believe that we have created a project that will be proud crown jewel. I absolutely went out and sent out the notices. It always seems to be someone that falls through the crack. I'm really sorry with that. I think you've heard that I was absolutely available and accessible, and met multiple times with those who had expressed items for me to follow up with through both email and actually additional in-face. I'm certainly available to do that with other items too, as we work through. I appreciate your time.
Questions? Yes, Vice Chair?
Got a lot of numbers spinning in my head, and I'm at a decision point, so I need your help. There are how many parking spaces? 168? What was?
128.
128.
There are 47, excuse me, 41 at grade and 87 in the subterranean.
And the two parking levels are not connected, is that?
That is correct.
You've gotta drive around the building? The number 300 on people, I understand, was a lawful maximum, and nobody should be shot for that. But let's say that it was 200, or something like that. How many trips a day did you, did you say 10 trips a day earlier in your opening remarks, and somewhere else I've seen 14? I need this to be explained to me.
Yeah, so--
What did Washington say like I'm a six-year-old? I don't see how you get that many trips out of that many people with no parking.
Right. And we can have our traffic engineer come up, just in quick. Traffic's always funny, right? Because traffic deals with peaks. They don't deal with how many in a day, how many in aggregate. They look at what's the busiest time of the day, and how many trips are created at that busiest time of the day. And so, when you look at just that busiest time of the day, then yes, with the 41 stalls at grade, it says that you will have at just that busiest time of the day, 10 go in that driveway in the morning, and 14 go in that driveway and out of that driveway in the evening.
Total.
Out of the 41. Now, remember, people leave at different times of the day.
And there's 128 spots for, we don't know how many people, somewhere between probably 100 and 200. How does that work?
Well, remember, that's just 41. The 87 below have to go out Shelburne, so that's, they're not connected. So, out of those 41 stalls, at just the peak time of the day, you would have 10 going there. Now, people come earlier than the peak time. People stay late and work late, so it gets diffused throughout the day. That's where that number comes from.
I'm thinking if you're looking at a single tenant, if you're looking at a single tenant, then you're not gonna be retail selling customers, patients. You're gonna have workers, 200 workers, and they tend to arrive at the same time, tend, and they tend to leave at the same time. I don't understand the 14 trips, or whatever the trips are, and I also don't know where you're gonna put the cars. You need to educate me. 128 spots for approximately 200 people. Does that work elsewhere? Is that, is that a, one of the traffic phenomenons where you say, oh, it's really okay?
Who are you directing your question to?
Anybody who can answer it.
That's not right.
Chairperson.
You can ask this person if you want to. When we close, you can ask staff.
Is that a question you can answer? Is this, does this work elsewhere? Maybe 200 people, 128 parking spots?
Yeah, let me, we have our traffic engineer, if you don't mind, who did this, and we'll have him.
Yeah, thank you. Gary Black with Hexagon Transportation Consultants. I think it was explained earlier, we typically, when we do our traffic studies, we don't engage in questions about how many people are actually in the building, but we relate the traffic to the size of the building, which I can explain a little more in a minute. On the parking requirement, this project is meeting the town's parking requirement, so the town has determined through studying other projects over several years, that that's the right number of parking spaces for an office building with 30,000 square feet. You could ask the planning department more details about that. The way that we do our traffic studies to figure out how many cars are gonna come in and out is that we count other office buildings that are already built, and we see how many cars are going in and out of those office buildings. We relate that to the size of the building, then we project that onto this building. That was the basis of our estimates here. And I think Doug was talking, there's like three different things that are floating around. One would may be daily trips. I believe you asked about daily trips. We did have an estimate in our traffic study of the daily trips, and that estimate is 332, so 332 daily trips. Typically, we do our analyses at the busiest times of the day, at the morning and afternoon, when the workers are coming and leaving. Our estimates for that, and this is based on counting other office buildings in Los Gatos, for one hour, the highest hour, 40 in the morning, 49 in the afternoon. Then, I think Doug was also talking about the two different driveways. The project has two different parking fields, and it has two different driveways, and so, the number 10 and 14, that's our estimate of the traffic at the Winchester driveway, because that's a smaller parking lot, and we also have an estimate in our report of the driveway in Shelburne, which is a higher estimate, because that's a larger parking field. Hope that answers the question.
It may be minutia, but if the parking levels are not connected, and I'm trying to get in on Winchester, which is the smaller of the two, and it's full, how do I know that? What do I do?
Well, that's an excellent question, and in an office situation, we haven't engaged in the discussion of how this would be managed. My guess is that visitor parking spaces would be accessible from the Winchester driveway that would be marked for visitors, and employee parking spaces would be assigned, so you would be assigned to either the, let's call it the upper garage, or the lower garage. And in an office situation, you know, the people come, the same people come every day. They know where to park, and so, we don't see that that would be really that big of a deal, that there would be very many instances where a car would come in, not be able to find a parking place, and then go back out on the street to go into the other garage, in an office situation like this.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Hughes?
Thank you. Another traffic question. So, how would one relate the 40 and 49 to the 128 spaces?
Well, I guess that that question is kind of getting at, what period of arrival do we typically see for office buildings? I know there's a lot of thought that maybe everybody comes at the same time, but our studies have consistently shown that people come over a long period of time in the morning and leave over a long period of time in the afternoon. So, we typically see people start to arrive 6:30 a.m., and through maybe 10:30 or 11:00. And so, typically, office parking peaks at 11 o'clock in the morning, so that's, everybody's in by 11:00, and then they start to leave, and so, the parking gradually just decreases throughout the afternoon. There are spikes, you know, it's those certain hours, but when you watch office building driveways like we do for a living, that's what we see.
So, you would expect 40 per hour for five hours, or some of them are like that?
Well, we would not expect that there would be a need for more than 128 parking spaces, so 40 for five hours would be 200, so that we wouldn't expect that many. We would expect, you know, it ramps up, starts low, gets to a peak of 40, and then drops down again, and if we were to graph that, which I don't have a graph to show you, but you can imagine what that graph looks like with a maximum of 40, and the total area under that graph would be 128.
Okay, so you're saying the 128 is consistent with the 40 number that you've represented?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The 128, you had nothing to do with that. That was just simply meeting the town's requirements. So, when you assume 128 parking spaces, what did you assume for the population of the building?
As I stated, we don't make assumptions about the population of the building. What we do is that we count other buildings, other office buildings. We know their size. We don't know how many people are in there, but we know their size. We count their driveways. We see how many cars are going in and out per day, per hour. We relate that to the size of the building in terms of-- size of the building in terms of square footage, not in terms of number of people that are in there, but the square footage of building. We do that over multiple buildings, not just one. We do a bunch of buildings. So we converge on a number of what we would call typical. We use the term trip generation for an office building based on the size of the building.
So it's fair to say you do not take into account whether one building has twice as many people as another building. You assume the same load?
We base, well, it's, it's not even that complicated. We just-
It was pretty simple, actually.
We count, we count the cars going in and out of the driveways of the buildings, and then we relate that to the size of the building.
What I'm saying is, one building has three hundred people in it, and one building has two hundred people in it, and one building has a hundred people in it. You don't pay any attention to that. You look at building size and you say, the composite is a number.
Right.
Now, doesn't common sense tell you that you have different traffic patterns depending on how many people are in the given building?
Yes. And that's why we survey a, a, a number of buildings, not one or two, but I think the trip generation rates are based on over a hundred buildings. And so in this particular case, we also looked at some buildings specifically in Los Gatos. There aren't very many office buildings in Los Gatos of this size, so we only found three. We did count those, those three buildings. And, but the range was not that great.
What were the three buildings?
Uh, four seventy-five Alberta Way, sixteen seven ninety-five Lark Avenue, and nine seventy-five University Avenue. Those buildings are all in the fifteen to thirty thousand square foot range. And-
Well, you have three of them. Can you, can you tell me the square footage of each?
The square footage? Yes. Do you want to go building by building?
Well, there are only three of them, so yes.
Yeah, four seventy-five Alberto's thirty thousand approximately square feet. Sixteen seven ninety-five Lark is twenty-two thousand square feet. Nine seventy-five University Avenue is fifteen thousand square feet.
And you get some kind of averaging by doing what?
We count the cars going in and out of the driveways of those buildings. We divide by the size. We get number of trips. That's our lingo, number of trips per square foot or thousand square feet.
So you take the number of trips for fifteen thousand, you take the number of trips for the next number, and the number of trips for thirty thousand. Yet those were your three, right?
Yeah.
And then you factor it such that you take into account this relative size of the buildings?
Yes.
So if I were to look at thirty, I'd expect twice as much as fifteen?
Yes. Exactly right.
Notwithstanding what in fact is reality.
And that's, that's pretty much what we found. And if, if you really care to dig into this deeply, we do have the numbers in our traffic study are actually published, so.
Oh, I believe you.
I don't know how, how much you want to dwell on this subject, but yes.
If I get really tired tonight, I'll dwell on it. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Birch?
It's not for the traffic engineer. It's for the applicant. A question following up, though, on that conversation is, so, you know, I understand the hundred and twenty-eight and how we get to that. That's, that's how the town works. And obviously, for a typical office, you know, you can be looking at one per two hundred square feet to one to about three hundred square feet for typical office use. So that gets us over the one twenty-eight if each person was driving. And unfortunately, we all love our cars and most people drive. So is your plan, when you exceed a hundred and twenty-eight cars, to park on the street?
So in our experience, you are going to have a lot of different factors that go into that. One is that people take vacations, right? And so you are never at quite the peak load. The other one is, as I think I mentioned earlier, we are going to be utilizing the TDM measures. One of the great reasons, and I think, I wasn't obviously here when the thought process went in to zone this area as office, but it's a fantastic location for getting to from alternative means with bicycling and pedestrians, et cetera. And so we absolutely want to take advantage of that and utilize that in order to drive down that number as well. And then overflow, I think, you know, people find different ways that they deal with that, yes.
We can't do that. Can I ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
So you just mentioned the biking, and Ms. Dormer had brought up the number of people that do travel on that road via bike. Have you had a chance to meet with the Los Gatos, with the Bike Coalition, to look at how you may get involved in that program and assist in maintaining safety in proximity of your project for the children and other cyclists?
I haven't yet. That's a great idea.
I'd really like you to do that, please.
Yeah, I should do that.
It's, it's a very active thing that's happening here in town and has, a mother of kids that bike to school is very well appreciated and has increased a lot of safety.
That's a great idea. Can you tell me the name again? Sorry?
It's, the Bike Coalition.
If you call the Los Gatos Elementary School District, they can-
Yes. Yeah. Because I don't, I don't know if I could give you like an exact number or anything. And may I ask one last question? I'm going to, I'm going to switch from traffic and all to the architecture. So in listening to what your neighbors and all are saying, I'm definitely going to agree with some of the confusion on the building heights, because within your own documents, you have two different elevations. So if you look at A two-point-oh and A four-point-oh, I get two different heights. And I definitely understand how the grade works and how we measure to. But I'm going to say, let's not take those actual number facts. Let's talk perspective. And if you look at A four-point-oh, I think, as you've listened to your neighbors, those numbers are what it's going to feel like, particularly with the architectural elements you have on the front, which I, I think look good, but I'm not sure are going to be as well received in this area as they may be elsewhere. So for example, if you look on the west elevation, it says to the parapet, it's thirty-nine feet, two inches. And I think what's going to happen for your neighbors, even though if you, you measure from grade and all the things that I do know how the town does that, the feeling is going to be that it's nearly forty feet. So my question for you, as you are trying to, to work with the neighborhood, and I've definitely heard that you want to, would you be willing to take a look at some of those architectural details that drive that height up and create a, what feels like a quite immense vertical plane in two spots on the front, if you would look at other ways of bringing that height down?
So I just want to start, I guess, by clarifying one thing that, and this is, I realize this, the confusion that comes from this, so I'm not surprised, and this is, is my bad. That height is actually measured from the lower level parking lot. As you can see, like if you look at section three on the right, you'll see what is clearly labeled as ground zero, 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 is well below the ground. And that's where that comes from, which is why that number skews so high, if that makes sense.
I know how to read, yeah, I know, I know what this is. But what I'm saying is, I actually think in listening to your neighbors, depending on where they're standing, these numbers are what they feel like they're going to see. And if that's the case, and there are some architectural tweaks that don't mean you're losing overhead ducting ability and distribution that I know you need, but if there are architectural tweaks that could bring some of that perceived height down, would you be willing to look at those?
Yeah, I think so. I guess, did you have any specific suggestions on, on what that would be?
Well-
Just to kind of give me a flavor for-
I see three architectural elements that stick up high.
Yeah.
And I think you can pretty obviously see them from here, too.
Yeah.
Those would be the items that perhaps could be lowered and softened. I, I do like how you've used the roof to screen the mechanical. I wish more buildings would do that, because it hides it, it looks very nice. But I think while those architectural details look very nice in certain settings, perhaps the setting of where this building is going to be, it doesn't ingrain with the neighborhood as well. And perhaps when you look at perceived height and perceived massing, those elements could be softened. And I'd like to know if you'd be willing to look at that, depending on how this conversation goes tonight.
Yeah. I, I think I would. And I guess my, my one question slash request you could call would be if, if, if I can agree to that, if you would be comfortable that I could work with staff on that post-hearing, would absolutely do that to try and soften those? You bet.
I am. I can't speak for my other fellow commissioners. I, I trust that staff does take these notes down very well. And unfortunately, they've had to work with me entirely too long, so they know what I'm looking for.
They know what you are. Okay, that would be great. I'd love to work with staff on that.
Yes. But I, I would obviously have to look to my other commissioners, so.
Yep.
Commissioner Hudes?
I have two areas. Maybe I'll just take one of them first, and that's trees. So I'm trying to reconcile the report from Ms. Ellis and the schedule of trees that you have in the document. In one case, I'm seeing in the Arborist Report, twenty-three removed protected trees and out of thirty-six, which is sixty-four percent of the protected trees. I'm also looking at your Schedule L two, which shows twenty-nine removed out of forty-three, if I'm correct, which is sixty-seven percent. So two questions here. The first one, probably the most important one, is have you looked at other configurations that wouldn't remove two-thirds of the protected trees for this project?
We looked at a lot of different configurations. In fact, that was one of our selling points for residential, candidly. It, we could save a lot more trees, because you have smaller buildings, obviously. As we looked at the building, we're trying to balance a lot of different factors, and it's really tough, right? Because it's like, well, if we save this tree, then I got to push the building closer to neighbors and the problems with that. And I would love to have this, but because of grade, I can't do it. And so we looked at trying to save the maximum amount of trees that we could. And we felt like, and we've made changes, actually, as we went through this process. We reduced the size of the building. We increased the setbacks. We dropped twenty-five hundred square feet in order to save some trees. And so we've absolutely done that as part of our process and felt like, okay, love to save more, but based on the realities of the site and everything, this is where we ended up.
Okay. So the, I, I'm not saying I'm convinced, but it sounds like you've, you've basically said that in order to move forward with this project, you need to remove two-thirds of the protected trees?
Yeah. I, we made changes. We absolutely cut the size of the building by twenty-five hundred square feet to accommodate those. And we got to the point where it's like, yes, this is where we are in order to move forward.
Okay. The, the second question is, do you feel that there's a discrepancy between the Arborist Report and then, and the particular trees that are listed in the Arborist Report, which is thirty-six, and your report, which is forty-three trees? Have some of these already been removed, or what, what accounts for the difference?
Staff may be able to help me on this, too. I believe the difference is that there are trees on site that don't fall under the purview of the tree policy because of size of tree, et cetera. But we still show them as coming out, and I believe that's the difference.
But in terms of, I was counting the number of coast live oak, which I think there are thirteen on your report and on their report, on the Arborist Report, it's, it's a different number. I mean, I'm concerned about these trees, particularly the live oaks. We need to get this right. And so I'm very uncomfortable in, you know, for the second reason as well, which is that I'm not sure we've accounted for the trees that are going to be cut, because there's a significant discrepancy between the Arborist Report and what you're planning to do on L two. So I would suggest, you know, trying to provide some more information in order to resolve that discrepancy.
Let me just verify. Your Arborist is not present?
Correct. We used the town Arborist, Deborah Ellis.
Okay. The reason I ask is I recall at one point, there was some discussion of, I think it was fruit trees, but it was something that were not, as you said, in the same category as, to be saved. But I can't, I, I could not answer the question that was just asked. And we apparently don't have anybody, well, ultimately, when we close the public input, we'll check with staff on that. But I wanted to give you an opportunity if you had anything-
I believe that's the difference, yes.
Okay. Are there other questions? Yes. Commissioner Janoff?
Just a few questions. There's been some discussion from the neighborhood requesting that the siding of the building be moved away from Winchester Avenue. Have you looked at that at all?
We have looked at that. And I think, I don't know, Scott, if you want to come, in terms of, you're talking about pushing it back?
Pushing it toward the dog and cat hospital.
Correct. So we did look at that. It, it does entail several impacts, including elimination of more trees. It also then has drainage. He mentioned how the drainage comes down in the property. We need to be able to have enough space there so that we can properly capture the water and get it away from the site, so it doesn't go into our neighbor's property through there as well. And so, and then there's just cleaning the water, the CTH requirements, that that is the lowest point of the site. And so water has to get there, and we have to treat it there. And so pushing it any closer to that ten feet was problematic. I think, you think we can, is there any ability to push that there any closer than our current ten? Sorry, is he, can he?
I have to come up and speak. Scott Shorke, BKF Civil Engineer. So I think the big issue primarily is the trees. So if you push it closer, most of all those trees along that property line would need to be eliminated.
So just a follow-up question. If you move the siding of the building back, then there's a potential to possibly save two additional trees that are coast live oak, number eighteen and number thirty-four, both with, with, in the Arborist Report, they're in good condition and have a fairly sizable tree trunk. So it might be a reasonable trade-off. Given the concern for, for the damage the trees on the back of the property are causing to the neighboring property, perhaps there's a, a variance that could be negotiated that would enable everybody to be happy, and you push the property, or you push the siding of the building back a little bit?
I, I think that's a good suggestion. And once again, I think we'd love to work with staff and see if we can push that back. I, I, I understand the suggestion.
Do you have any, just, when you say push it back, do you have any specifics in mind? I mean, push it back more than five feet, for example?
Well, I think, I would say push it back as far as possible. I don't know the specific dimensions in terms of what's feasible, but you've got plenty of setback, because the parking is giving you your, your legal setback at, at ground level. So I don't see any reason why I couldn't go back farther.
Yeah, I was just trying to, I assume you means, I don't want to use the word substantial, but material distance. In other words, people can move something back two feet. I don't suppose that would do anything.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure about that, because the nature of this property is that it slopes from Winchester back toward the dog and cat hospital. Any push of that building site to the rear is going to effectively lower its, its elevation, at least from the, from the-
Okay.
From the Winchester side, things. So that was-
Thank you. You got another question, I think? No?
I did.
I'm sorry.
And I've lost it. Thank you.
In case there's somebody else to ask a question, yes, you can think about it. Okay, Commissioner Benami?
If Commissioner Janoff was looking for a number, some of the letters that I read were suggesting ten feet. So would that maybe be a number that you might be looking for?
If ten feet will suffice and it's possible, then absolutely. If it could, I, what I'm suggesting is that the parking, the parking spaces and the, and the, and the parking alley gives you enough setback to meet the, the setback requirements. So therefore, you don't need to preserve what's on the other side of the parking spaces as you're, as you're facing the dog and cat hospital. So to the degree that it's amenable to all parties and a variance is acceptable, I think you could, you could possibly gain, the neighborhood could gain, you still keep your square footage, you don't lose any parking spaces, and you effectively lower the height. So kind of win, 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 win.
Commissioner Birch, did you have your hand up? You did, but perhaps you changed your mind?
I think I was going to open up a whole can of worms, so I'm going to keep my mouth shut. No, I'll keep my mouth shut.
All right. Are there other questions? Yes, Commissioner Hudes?
So I'm having some difficulty with the compatibility of the architecture in the neighborhood. I wonder if you could maybe make a concise argument about why this is compatible when I see no other office buildings that look like this in the vicinity. And the only other office building, commercial space, is of a totally different style. The only other one that's of similar scale, Palo Alto Medical Foundation, is a totally different style to this. So is it, what is the argument about compatibility of the architecture in this particular location?
I think the town architect actually hit on what you're heading at, which is, when you read that person's recommendation, they say that the project is compatible architecturally in the site- in the site that you are. However, things north of you, on Winchester, it would, this architecture would not be compatible, and it referenced the sites that you just referenced. And so, I think that you're making the exact point that the town architect made, which is, you have to look at Winchester in different sections. In your section, you are compatible, looking at surrounding architecture. Once you get north of you, we would need to look at this specifically, and I think you could read that in their letter.
I did read the letter. Specifically, which buildings in the vicinity do you think this is compatible with?
I think there's not really a stylistic comparison to any of the buildings, but I think we have taken the cues from example that we've put up on the screen of the residential house that has a more contemporary feel to the material, materiality. There are other contexts within the town that library gave us some cues of some of the elements that are very, I think the important thing that I, we went through the commercial design guideline multiple times. I think it's about the quality of the building and the material, the warmth, the context, how it fits into the neighborhood in terms of the scale of the building, in lieu of stylistic. Because what I read through this document is, there is not necessarily, you know, just relevant to stylistic things, where you kind of pick 31 flavor ice cream, so to speak. It's really a whole sets of, you know, massing, scale, setback, preservation of neighborhood, all those things that's kind of described here. Even though the old zoning is not in here, we've taken really to heart all the things that's been written in this design guideline to come up with a design, so.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
I agree with you, for the tech. There's a lot of compliance in here with respect to the numbers on the commercial design guidelines, but there, you know, this is not in a specific district, where there are specific considerations for each district. You could have license to be a little eclectic out there, but if we're going to adhere to the commercial guidelines, 1.4 Community Expectations says, near the top, "Maintenance of a sense of place with views of surrounding hills preserved." Boom. And that preservation was not there when I walked, when I walked it today, when I walked it previously. And I think what you're hearing is, if you did a better effort of preserving those views, you could sort of define your sense of place with that building. There's a Harvardian negative, you know. I did not dislike the project the first time I looked at it, but the closer we look at it, the more we listen to the community, then there's some, there's some cracks in the ceiling. I think the, I think we're going to end soon, and I wish I had an understanding of whether or not you thought you could comply with some of the community concerns, my concern on preserving those hillside view sheds by reducing the size of the project. I think that's the number one thing you're going to hear, and that's our number one hurdle.
Is that a question?
Yeah. Did you know that?
That won't do it.
No.
New sheriff in town.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
You're officially called on. So, back to the question I remembered. The reason I think this, the architectural design feels so imposing is because in spite of the fact that you may have articulated the roof line, which is a nice design, you haven't really done much to articulate the front elevation from just looking at it. So, it's pretty flat, and pretty glassy, and pretty stucco-y, so it feels kind of flat, and glassy, and somewhat cold. By contrast, the medical building up the street has, it's a larger square footage, but it's got a smaller massing on the second floor than from the first floor, so it has a sense of not such an imposing flat mass as you're looking at it straight on. Part of the issue that I have, that I think, if possible, the two design elements that you're describing as the tower, while they have an attractiveness in the context of your design, when you look at the story poles, they actually exacerbate the problem from the Winchester view, and they contributed that sense of big height at street level. And so, my question is, is there a willingness to reconsider that design feature? It's hard to tell what's in those towers, whether it's, especially at the top, it's a very high ceiling, it would be considerably more than the 11 or 13 foot that you've indicated. Can they be reduced some? Could they get to bring down that, and still keep an articulated roof line, but bring down the overall front-facing block, so that it's not quite so visually imposing? Question, would you be willing to consider that?
Yes. I think that the two items that I've heard, that I think will help improve and address the concerns that we can absolutely do, is to address those features, and to bring them down, and to soften that, and then to work with staff on that, and work with staff to see how far back we can push the building to really address those concerns.
All right. Commissioner Birch?
Just taking what she said, and I'm remembering the conversation we had at CDAC. And one of the things that we did talk about at CDAC, which I think is tying into what some of my fellow commissioners are saying, was we did talk about the white facade, if you recall, and we did actually ask, can you not make it be white? Could there be more of a wood element, more of a stone, something to make it not be? And at that meeting, you had said, yeah, but you're still coming back with a lot of white. So, I think what I'm hearing up here is, when you have a lot of glazing, and then you have white stucco, we all know that that winds up, the facade becomes quite bright. So, I think what I'm hearing my fellow commissioners say is, you know, some of the impression of what's happening here may be softened by removing the white stucco, implementing more of the wood and that warmth into it, or stone, or whatever can be, a warmer texture that then offsets the glazing, the amount of glazing. So, I would ask if you would be willing to look at those type of architectural changes that would soften the facade.
Yeah. We actually, since the last meeting, committee meeting, we actually added more of the wood rain screen. But we can definitely look at, you know, kind of proportion of that even more than what it is right now.
Thank you.
Are there more questions? If there are not, I will close the public input to the public hearing, and we will take a 10-minute recess. Okay. Thank you all. We're now going to deliberate, so I invite my fellow commissioners to either make a motion or further discussion, questions, please. Yes, Commissioner Birch?
So, I'll start the discussion and see what my fellow commissioners feel. We've heard a lot of stuff today, and we've heard a lot on both sides, and I feel very good when I hear an applicant say they do hear the people of the town, and they want to work with them. So, I appreciate that. That isn't always the case, and I always find that to be a very good sign. I feel that we probably are going to need to see this project again, in my opinion, because some of the things that we're asking, I think, are multifaceted, as far as the change in the architecture, the ability to move the building back, and a few other things. Perhaps some of it just comes from my unfortunate knowledge, and sometimes looking at this, and what codes are going to require as far as access and parking and everything. So, those are things I know that I would feel more comfortable if I could see again. I also would like, if we were, this, my commissioners agreed with me, and we were to see it, I'd like to see some feedback on what was heard from some very concerned citizens, and how that was addressed in conversations between the applicant and yourself. I don't expect that everyone's going to get everything they want, but what I do like to see is that people did sit down and talk, and it sounds like you are more than willing to work with the issue as far as the headlights, which I think is great. I think it sounds like you're willing to look on moving the building back, and some things like that, which I think are very positive. So, that's my feel on it. I think we've given some clear direction on that. I hope we have, but I would love to hear from my other commissioners on your thoughts.
Yeah. Let me make this suggestion. Commissioner Birch has specifically mentioned maybe three things, she can tell me it was more or less, but something like that. So, if I, if any of you either have additions, or you would rather have some other kind of motion, let's hear from it now. Commissioner Benami?
Well, I would say this project does have merit, but it needs refinement, and what struck out at me was the community expectations that Vice Chair Kane had quoted, that the maintenance of a sense of place with views of surrounding hills preserved is very important within our commercial design guidelines. Also, too, page seven of the commercial design guidelines does say that a project needs to have sensitive interface with the adjacent residential neighborhood, and we did hear from the adjacent residential neighborhood. So, I had itemized a list of concerns that I would have, that I would like to see done in addition to what Commissioner Birch mentioned, that I would be happy to make a motion to continuing this to a date certain, because some of the items that I jotted down included what Commissioner Birch had mentioned. So, I can go ahead and read those off and make the motion, unless somebody else would like to add.
Let me make this suggestion, because, well, because it would make it more likely that we could reach a point where we would do more, okay? So, I'm not against your making a motion at all, but if you have something to add that we could all listen to, because before you make your motion, people might say, well, how about one thing more, or one thing less, and would make the motion, I think, probably better for everybody? So, if you don't mind holding off for a minute on the motion, but she could get... So, if you don't mind holding off for a minute on the motion, if you could give us some more things, that'd be fine.
Sure, I'll read my list. So, I would say that I'd like for the applicant to meet with the neighbors, specifically the neighbors at University Oaks to address their concerns, other members of the community included. Swap the metal fence for a solid wall, which they agreed to do. Consider architectural tweaks to lessen the perception of the height, or consider reducing the height of the building. Consider moving the building back. Meet with the bicycle coalition. And at our next meeting, I would really like for the town arborists to be present, which I think might make Commissioner Hudes happy.
That's, that's always worthwhile. Commissioner Hudes?
So, I won't repeat that part, but I appreciate that. And, and I, I would maybe be a little bit specific, that I'd like to see a decrease in the number of trees removed. And I'd also like to see a reconciliation of the town arborist report to the schedule that's submitted in the application, so we know which trees will actually be removed. And then, I think there was also a point that was raised about the exhaust location, the noise and exhaust location, that I would like to see added as well.
Yes, Gushner Hansen?
Commissioner Badami touched on this. I don't think it's the bicycle coalition, I'm thinking it's Safe Rides to School, given the proximity of this, this building to, to Dave's Avenue School, as well as the kids that are commuting to Fisher, it's really important. And I, I, irrespective of the transportation analysis and, and the comments by our Parks and Public Works, I, I don't, I don't feel like the way that this is set up is going to be safe. I, I think things should be considered, including maybe not allowing left turns across Winchester, or potentially adding a light there, or a crosswalk, or something, that, something that will make it safer pedestrians, and also slow down the driving going down Winchester when you consider all these schools. But I would leave it to them to work with Safe Rides to School to get the specifics on that, but I, I don't think leaving it alone's going to work, and I think there's going to be accidents, and people are going to get hurt. So, I, I, I know that's really important for me, so.
Other comments? Vice Chair Kane?
I just want to underscore what was just said about the traffic. I spent some time there today. We, most of us, as one of the letters said, start to accelerate after we pass Blossom Hill. And every time I do that, I'm reminded that Dave's School is there. But when I was sitting, standing there today watching, there is a speed monitor device, and if you're doing 26, it'll come on, you're doing 26, stop at 25. I didn't see a lot of numbers today, because when the machine gets really mad, it just says, slow down, slow down. I saw about 40 of those. We do, we do accelerate when we're coming out, when we're heading north, and we have a hard time slowing down when we're, when we're headed south. So, that, I don't know what the applicant can do about that. Maybe some creative thinking when they get back together with staff, but I would have strong concerns about a left turn out onto Santa, onto Winchester. That doesn't seem to be a good idea. The letters addressed it, I looked at it myself today. I could live with a left turn in, because the queuing line is adequate. I have concerns about left turn out. You could make a right turn, go down the, what is it, Chelbourne? It's a short distance to University, that would get you south. But a left turn, unless the traffic people tell me that that's just simply naive, that'd be one of my big concerns.
Other comments? Let me say this, and I'm going to invite Commissioner Badami to make her motion. When you hear all these things, obviously you have to decide what, what you can do and what you want to do. And then, when you come back, you either say, I did it, or you say, I didn't do everything, and here's why. Nobody can tell you how to do your own project, but hopefully you will benefit from the concerns we have, because I share those concerns. And so, I just wanted to say that we're not telling you how to do your project, but since we're going to have to pass on it, we're probably giving you fairly good hints about what we're going to do. So, that being the case, Commissioner Badami?
I will make my motion, and I move to continue to a date certain with specific direction, to consider the comments made by the commission.
Do you have a second?
Be happy to second that.
Vice Chair Kane, now, are there any comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Pardon me? Oh, we do need a date certain, yes, I'm sorry. Good point.
Well, not knowing how long it may take the applicant to pull this together, I'm going to assume it's going to be at least a four to six weeks out to accomplish the evaluation of what's being requested, including meeting with the neighbors. And so, I would probably, the absolute earliest I would suggest is March 8th.
Well...
You can, you can bring the applicant back up.
For the limited purpose of seeing her on the same page with you on that, I'm going to reopen the public comment, but just for that one limited purpose. So, I'm asking you whether that date, 3/8, is realistic from your work standpoint?
Ask one quick question.
Sure. Yes, sir?
Is the next meeting after that available?
Yes, the, the next meeting would be March 22nd.
I think that would be suitable, make sure we can address these, meet with the appropriate people, and, and have time to prepare the materials.
Well, that's fine, thank you. I will now close again the public input, and ask the maker of the motion whether that date is acceptable to her.
That date is acceptable to me.
And the, and the seconder?
That date is acceptable.
All right, I'm, same question, and let's just revote. Is everybody in favor of the now more detailed motion?
Aye.
It's again unanimous, so, there's, we don't discuss appeal rights, because it's continued, so. Okay, so, thank you all very much. We'll see you on March 22nd. Now, we can go on to our calendar. I think the only thing, well, I was supposed to ask, pardon me?
Did you write that?
Oh, yeah, we're getting there, we're getting there. I was also supposed to ask if there were any commission matters earlier, and I didn't. So, before I get to, to the report, I will ask if there are any commission matters. I've never fully understood what a commission matter is, but if you have a commission matter, please let me know.
I'm trying to be here tonight.
Okay, now for something intelligent.
So, very briefly, I just want to announce two things, which I know the commission's very familiar with, but for those in the audience, tomorrow evening, we'll be right back in here all together to continue our discussion of the North 40, the potential North 40 specific plan amendments. The other item I want to point out is that on January 31st, the council will be holding a priority session. There, they will be looking at various priorities brought up by various commissions, members of the public, and staff, to kind of set the individual departments' work plans moving forward for the next year.
One, one question. We're having a joint meeting on February 28th, is that correct?
Correct. The end of February, there is a tentative joint session between Planning Commission and Council set.
And we'll get some kind of agenda for that?
Some additional details will be forthcoming.
Okay, are there any questions of, of staff? If not, a meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.